It's nice to have people here and yep, we just started our ability to take this and then we put this up on our YouTube for our community also to see and to be, you know, open and let our community see our school board meetings. I'm excited to say that probably in less than maybe four months, you will see us transition from being here at East High School to being in a district service business office up on Central Entrance. And there we will have a room that is really designed too for school board meetings along with a lot of safety codes and restroom availabilities and handicap accessibility. And so that will be an exciting time as well as we transition into that new business. But again, I want to welcome you. It is Tuesday, February 28th. It's about 6:35. We are the Duluth School Board at our regular school board meeting. We have an agenda that we've all had a chance to look at. We've had documents. The other thing we've had is we've had committee meetings throughout the last two weeks that lead up to this meeting tonight. So some of the things you'll see on our agenda tonight are items that we've already had significant committee meetings, significant conversation and discussion and opportunity to learn prior to this meeting tonight. So again, we welcome you and I turn it over to Clerk Zdowski who will take roll call.
Member Dirk Eater is excused. Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Here.
Member Lofal?
Here.
Member Oswald?
Here.
And I am here. Member Sandholm?
Present.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich?
Here.
HR Director Severance?
Excused.
And Board Secretary Paquette?
Here.
And then we have student representatives Lauren Maliter?
Here.
And Elsa Preubstier?
Thank you.
And our other two are excused.
We have also student representation from our AEOALC, but Destiny can't make it tonight. And so we do have a report and we'll share that as part of our agenda tonight as well. So moving on to agenda item number three, it is our pledge of allegiance, so I ask you to rise and the pledge and the flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda and again, we're a pretty formal school board. We follow Robert's Rules of Order parliamentary procedure and so you'll see a lot of that tonight as well. Number four is the approval of the agenda, so I'm asking for our board to approve our agenda tonight, the motion.
So move.
Member Laffler Kemp, a second.
Second.
Five, Member Sandholm. And so all those approving the agenda for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, our next item on our agenda is number five and it's school and community recognition. So I turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you Chair Lofal and good evening everyone. If I could have our students who will be recognized this evening, if you can come up to the table. May not have enough chairs, but if you could still come and as well as Mr. Simons is also here as well, so if he could also join us at the table, I'd be absolutely happy. And so if you can have a seat, I mean if you stand.
I can stand.
I'm sure someone will show a little deference and Mr. Simons to have a seat as well. Hey.
If I can stand, they can stand.
There you go. So so welcome this evening. Today I would like to recognize East High School CTE students. The students are Parker Dalek?
Here.
If you're here, raise your hand so we can recognize you.
Thank you.
Carter Bellfine, Noah Edwards, Seth Warner, Abby Braden, Ernest Barlow, Clarice Goldman, Joshua Lesky, Michael Butler, and James Kyle. Action is. Skis. Knees. These students did the work that will be visible for them and CTE residents for the next hundred years and I would like to recognize them for their excellent work. The last major piece of the Denfield High School clock tower, the sphere, was placed this past Saturday. And the best news of all, the clock will once again be working once a project is complete. These students, along with their teacher Donald Simons, worked to create new clock hands on one face of the Denfield clock tower as it was deteriorating. These students really stepped up to make sure the clock looks great for the Denfield community and we want to thank them for their efforts and their hard work. So let's congratulate them. Did you get a chance, Simons, to share insight on the project and how you think it went? And then students, you have a chance to also share your insight on how their experience went and then on the signs I'll allow you also at the end to not only talk about this project, but to just talk about CTE overall if you would like to. So let's start off with this recognition.
This this project went really well. We had to reverse engineer it because we didn't know dimensions, diameters, length. So Parker was took the lead on the CAD aspect of it. We were able to reverse engineer it, figure it out. Then we started cutting and sanding and cutting and sanding, planing, and then we had to sit for a long time because the density of the wood was at too high of a percent, so we couldn't paint it yet. After the density was below nine percent, we were able to finish it up. Mr. Spooner was really happy because he got it back right away and I mean, all the students really stepped up and did a great job. I mean, I helped guide them, but truly they're the ones that did all the work.
And are the hands currently on the clock right now?
Yes ma'am, and they face they face east.
Oh, they do.
Yes, it does. But no, it doesn't. You know, to be able to be part of the Hope community, it doesn't matter if it's east or Denfield, or you know, we're all a community and helping one another, that's all that matters.
Yeah. Any more like, any of the students like to share anything?
This was one of my, personally one of my favorite projects, especially since it kind of brought us all together in a small community, especially with Denfield being involved as well, but I think we put our best effort into that, right?
So I do want to thank you again for all the efforts I'm sure the board members would like to also share. At least this seemed like the clock tower had been worked on for the last two and a half, three years since I joined the district almost three years ago and it's going to be really nice to see it fully functional and working, so really thank you for all the efforts. Board members, your turn. Huh? This is really cool guys. You know, for years to come, you know, you'll be able to look at that east facing clock and say, you know, that you had a hand in that and that's it's one of those ones in a lifetime experiences and you'll get to cherish and kind of savor for years to come. So congratulations on your work. I wish I'd have been down there. James Spooner sent us pictures and it was fun to see those pictures as it was going up. Did you guys get to watch that installation of over the weekend? Was it?
Well, it had to be two different kind of installations, right? The sphere went, but when did the hands go on at the same time?
I believe there was a few weeks before.
Yeah. Do you think you'll guarantee that they'll actually tell the right time now for the next hundred years?
I will guarantee they are exactly the way they were.
Again, I can't I can't thank you all enough for the creativity, the hard work, the working as a team to come up with this. The idea, where did the idea come that you could actually replace the hands? Where did that come from? Come.
I'm a teacher.
I set you up for that, did I not? I set you up for that.
This is, you know, this is this is all part of that, the engineering and what we're trying to do. All CTE, you know, every one of these are special trades.
Right.
The manufacturing students, the engineering students, you collaborate, you work together. This is what we want. You've seen how CTE has changed here at East and Denfield. I mean, we are doing a lot of great things and we're growing. As we talked about earlier, it's so nice to be back together and doing it and it's really showing on the product that they're kicking out. Your cups, you know? They're learning more 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 skilled trades. It's not just construction, machining, engineering, it's everything. The more you can teach them, let them choose what they want to do, you know? I know that they're all going to be successful. I believe in it a hundred percent. You know, they're a good group.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your leadership and again, on behalf of the school board and the administration and the team here at Duluth Public Schools, we just really appreciate the hard work and the and the collaboration, but I've lived my whole life in the western part of Duluth. I taught at Denfield for many years and so it's just delightful to know that that clock tower that's iconic to the western Duluth community and iconic to our community as a whole, that it's in good hands. So thank you. As long as you're back there, will you pick up the public comment clipboard? Again, we really appreciate the opportunity to start a school board meeting with such, you know, incredible opportunities to thank our students and our teachers and staff and that will continue. Next on our agenda is it is number six and it's our public comment. Before we start our public comment, and we encourage, we've got sign up sheets, you can sign up and then at the end of our this list, I always, we always reach out and see if there's anybody else who's decided they have something else they would like to share after listening to everyone else. But I first will ask Member Laffler Kemp to read our civility code and then Clerk Zdowski will explain just some general guidelines that I'm sure you've heard before or that you've seen on our website and explain just some of those details. So Member Laffler Kemp.
Thank you. Community vision and priorities for Duluth Public Schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven tools of civility, this school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include, one, pay attention, two, listen, three, be inclusive, four, don't gossip, five, show respect, six, be agreeable, seven, apologize, eight, give constructive criticism, nine, give responsibility, ten, be honest and care for others, and eleven, show your evidence, share your reasoning. And this is part of the Speaker Peace Civility Project by the Duluth Superior Community Foundation.
Thank you. And then Member Zdowski will go over just those basic guidelines for us.
Yeah. Thanks for everyone for being here today. As you know, the public comment portion of our meeting is for the school board to listen to community members and we really value all of your opinions and ideas and thank you for being here. Those wishing to speak during the public comment, like Chair Lofal said, should sign up on the sheet in the back, but if you didn't get an opportunity to do that, we can provide that for you as well. The board asks that each individual limits their comments to three minutes and so we have this little light here. As soon as you introduce yourself, I'll kind of hit the buzzer and you'll see a yellow light as time goes by and then a red light towards the end. And then if you have handouts for the board, feel free to give them to Board Secretary Paquette in the back. You can also email them to us if you'd like at theschoolboard@isd709.org and then just please follow the civility code. Thank you.
So our first speakers tonight are Reagan Kern and Hannah Freeberg.
Do I have to grab the microphone or just want us to sit there?
Is that a microphone?
I don't know, is it?
Okay. Why don't you have a microphone so that everyone can hear and then it's really more for our community when they watch this on our YouTube site, it gets hard for them to hear. And you can either sit or stand.
Hi everyone, my name is Reagan Kern and I'm a sophomore at Denfield High School.
I'm Hannah Freeberg and I'm also a sophomore at Denfield High School. My year sister teacher is Carl Stoneberg, he's sitting over there.
Mine's Angela Forastato and today we're going to be talking about our ancestry projects. This project was given to us in the first semester and in my class, this was given to us around Halloween and we were given a few months to complete it. We completed it around Christmas break.
Yes, and there was similar for our class too. It was our semester one final project. It consisted of many different portions, like interviewing people, you were able to make a family tree, you were able to talk about like who you are and like your values as well as like your history as coming over to the United States.
For a lot of my ancestry project, I used Ancestry Classroom. It was a really good resource. I got to see five generations up with names. I saw my grandma's great grandma, which was crazy. I've never even heard the name before. It was really fun. It was really, I learned a lot through it. In the family interviews, it was Thanksgiving and I pulled each of my grandparents into my office or my parents' office and I talked to them about forty-five minutes. I asked them a set of ten questions and they answered them and there were some incredible stories. I learned about my grandparents' experience during the JFK assassination, a bunch of those types of things and stories that you hear about in your history classes that you don't really get to hear the experiences of.
And similar to me, I did interview my grandparents. One specific story, I was interviewing my grandma. She was born in Mexico and she lived there until she was seven years old, but she had lived with her grandparents there while her parents had moved to America to create a start, to create a life there. So when she was seven and moved back to America and she moved in with her parents, she was unsure of that they were actually her parents because she had grown up knowing that her grandparents were her parents. So it was interesting to learn how she had adapted from the life and experience of the life now in Brainerd and I found it very interesting learning about my grandpa's stories too. But coming from a family of six, we value family a lot, so it was fun to hear how my grandma's family was like.
Another huge part of the project was nationality and where you came from really definitely knew who you are. I learned that I am Irish, which I did not know whatsoever, but it was really fun to just kind of dive into that, those side of things. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cassidy Wellhouse and on deck is Rebecca Monaco.
Do I need to use a microphone?
Would you please, because I think it's for really our channel YouTube.
Okay. Hello, my name is Cassidy Wellhouse and I am a special education resource teacher that primarily works with third graders at Laura MacArthur Elementary School. I am here tonight to speak about the need for caseload caps, mental health support, and the need for more paraprofessional support in order to create an overall safer environment for both staff and students. Today I brought two excerpts of documentation from just two of the students on my seventeen student caseload to give you a glimpse into the average day in my classroom. The first student will be called Student A. Student A flipped off the gym teacher and said that she did not owe her an apology. Student A then refused to go to class or to the resource room after beginning, after being given two choices. She then laid on the floor and shortly moved to her locker and began to make noises. She then stood up and began banging her head against the cement wall and stated that it was pretty effed up that I didn't care about her. As I tried to ignore the behaviors and redirect, the student then stated, "I'm not going back to treatment because of your ugly A-word." If we had caseload caps, I would have been, I would have been able to support this student fully without missing teaching a group. If we had mental health support, I would have been fully trained to deescalate this situation. If we had more paraprofessional support, this student would have had an adult with her during the specialist time. The next student that I will be talking about is Student B. Student B was walked down to my classroom by his general education teacher due to off-task behavior during math. He sat in my room while I was teaching. Once my group had left, I noticed that he had broken his pencil and a paperclip. He started to talk to, with me about someone taking his Pokemon card. He had been off task for more than thirty minutes, so according to his positive behavior support plan, it was time to call home and reset. While talking with the guardian, he began to hit his head and start crying. We decided we would give it another fifteen minutes and call back either way. Once we hung up, he continued self-harming by hitting his head and jumping on chairs and then walking for more support and a paraprofessional came. The student attempted to break the chair, but was able to start self-regulating after he was able to play with some magnet tiles. After giving the student a five-minute warning and cleaning up, he, we began to walk back to class. On the way back, the student began to ruminate on losing the Pokemon card and began kicking lockers. I walked for the office assistant to call the guardian for pickup and for more support. As we gathered his belongings, the student attempted to jump off the second floor stairs, but a paraprofessional and a social worker were there to pull him back. The student was then placed in a hold and walked down to the office. In the office, he stated, "I have no purpose in life. I want to kill myself." If we had caseload caps, I would have been able to attend to his needs quicker. If we had more mental health support, I would be able to navigate suicidal discussions with both student and guardian successfully. If we had paraprofessionals, an adult would have been with him during that time. These are just two experiences my students and I have endured due to the lack of caseload caps, mental health support, and the severe need for more paraprofessionals. We need caseload caps, mental health training support, and paraprofessionals for the safety and well-being of all staff. We also need you in our building, in our classrooms, and as our partners. Thank you.
On deck is Kristin Passion. I'll do a light tap at three minutes and then a light tap at three-ten.
Hi, my name is Becky Monaco and this is my seventh year working as a special education teacher at Laura MacArthur Elementary. Most of my colleagues are behind me and I love my school and I love my colleague. I'm speaking to you tonight to ask for your support, support with mental health for students and for fair wages for paraprofessionals. Starting with mental health, over forty percent of my school's student population consists of students who receive special education services. This is a huge amount of kids. Many of these children are in need of mental health support. Some support can be offered through social emotional groups as part of their IUP. However, we have limited staff who are trained in this area. Resource teachers are not formally trained in mental health. We have one special education social worker, yes, only one, and this person is shared between two buildings with an enormous caseload and we only get her three days a week. Let me repeat that, three days of the week, we have one trained professional to support the mental health needs of our special education students. In addition, we only have one general education social worker for the remainder of our student population and more. Support our students by supporting mental health. On to paraprofessionals, where do I start? Paraprofessionals are the heart of our school, of our building, of our district. Without their support, we would not be able to function. These hardworking individuals help with academics, functional skills, behavioral support, physical lifting, toileting, and a variety of safety measures that we could not perform without them. They also wear many other hats such as student cheerleaders, confidence builders, communicators, messengers, and hygiene guys. Our most vulnerable students are only able to be at school because of these individuals. They work hard every single day. I think we can all agree on most of these points. The P7 disheartening is that we are losing many of these individuals in our schools. Why? Because they get paid next to nothing, which is frankly insulting. Let's see here, who's my spot? Also, they are often very short-staffed, which leads to burnout and which leads to unsafe classrooms and unsafe students. We need to do better for our staff and our students, so support our kids by supporting our paraprofessionals. Respectfully, if you need more proof, please let us know when you would like to volunteer or schedule a time to meet with staff. It would be nice to see some of your faces in our building so that we can confidently say that you know what we are needing. And it is really disappointing to see only some of you when the governor comes to our school. Some of you were at our school when the governor visited. I haven't seen you around much other than that, so it'd be nice to see you guys more in our school, talking to our staff, talking with our students, and getting to know our needs so that we can better help our students that we love. Thank you.
Kristin and then Haley Riwicz.
Hi, my name is Kristin Passion. I am the NTSSSEP coordinator at Wardine East Middle School. I'm here today to talk a little bit about some staffing needs and the issues that we have surrounding WIN. I worked in this district for eight years. I've been a music teacher for fifteen. This is the first year that I've done something different, but what I have noticed in my new support staff role is that we have a building of almost eleven hundred students and that we are grossly understaffed in some of our areas, just like our colleagues just described at Laura MacArthur. We have one full-time social worker for all eleven hundred students. We have, this year, we have three counselors finally instead of two and we also have just gotten a dean of students that started in the end of last year and has continued that position into this year. However, we were only able to get that dean of students at the cost of losing two of our supervisory paras, so we only have a total of three supervisory paras for the entirety of our building of eleven hundred students. When those students are at lunch, all of our three supervisory paras are in the lunchroom supervising and that leaves us with no supervision in our hallways throughout the rest of the building. Things happen, behaviors happen, and we believe that our students deserve better than that. They deserve more support, more opportunities to follow our expectations and to be guided in the correct direction. Additionally, our WIN period right now, which we all know stands for what I need, is not what students need in the current form that we are in. Our building has right now a total of ten teachers on overloads, which means that they cannot host a WIN class during our WIN time and that has caused our WIN numbers to skyrocket from low twenties into over thirty students. During that WIN time, which is not supposed to be considered a prep time for teachers, we are also expected to deliver our very important SCL curriculum of second step and with no prep. And it requires a high level of vulnerability for our students and with a classroom full of thirty-two kids, that can be a hard sell. So we feel that those lessons are important, but that they are not getting the time that they deserve because of the situation that we are in. So what we are asking is to bring attention to the staffing issues at Wardine East. We need more teachers, ten overloads is too many. We need additional para support in addition to the dean, in addition to the counselor, in addition to my position, and in addition to our social worker. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Haley Riwicz and on deck is Shane Johnson. Our next speaker is Haley Rubich, and on deck is Shane Johnson.
This is working, alright. Hi, good evening. My name is Haley Rubich. I'm a Duluth native that grew up in Herman Town, and I'm currently a third-grade teacher at Laura McArthur, some of the best people that I know in my life. I'm here to speak about the lack of funding, the lack of resources, and the lack of basic needs in our building every single day. I'm asking for your help. We need your help. We're struggling. We're tired. If you walk into our building, I want you to take a look at the dirty floors that our kids walk on, the stairs where our students make science investigations on the rotting food and debris for weeks at a time, the bathrooms that are covered in feces and urine and garbage and vandalism. I want you to look at the empty bookshelves in the classrooms with district-provided curriculum. I want you to look at the lack of coffee or paper because we've been out of paper since November. The Pop-Tarts and the cinnamon rolls that we're feeding as nutrients to growing bodies, I want you to look at that. The seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch rates and the eleven-year discrepancy in our students' lives from the east side to the west side. I want you to come in and listen to the screaming and crying of children in crisis in our hallway. I need you to take a look at the students that are buying, at the teachers that are buying student snacks, toiletries, clothes out of their own pockets, the teachers that are being hit, kicked, stabbed, punched, physically assaulted, verbally assaulted, the teachers who are frantically searching teachers' pay teachers to find kindergarten curriculum even though I might teach third grade, the teachers that are giving every ounce of their blood, their sweat, and their tears into their classrooms that come with twenty desks and a smartboard that doesn't work. I want you to look at the teachers that are splitting classes for coverage five minutes before the bell rings because we don't have subs. I want you to look at the teachers staying past contract hours because it's impossible to plan for seven subjects across five different grade levels in thirty minutes a day. And then I want you to look at the one outstanding paraprofessional that's expected to service five different classrooms. That's a hundred kids for one paraprofessional, when forty percent of our students are on IDUs. I want you to take a look at the kids that come from the broken incarcerated families. The kids that are going hungry. They're starving. The kids that are being left to take care of themselves and their siblings because their parents aren't home. I want you to look at the kids coming into school that don't know how to read, and they don't know how to do math, and they don't know how to sit on the floor and tie their shoes and say please and thank you. And I want you to tell me, is this working? So I would like to leave you with the words that we've been told time and time again. Because we deserve to work in a safe environment, a clean environment. We deserve to have our needs met and our students met. So I ask you, do it for the kids if you're not going to do it for us. Do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shane Johnson. On deck is Sophia Conley.
Good evening. My name is Shane Johnson. I am the dean of students at Laura McArthur Elementary. I would like to take a moment to share two ideals with you, the ideal of magical moments and opportunities. This is my thirtieth year as an educator. I've always taught. I've always found school to be magical, a place where you can grow and learn and discover all the possibilities of life. I would like to share some of that magic of Laura McArthur. You've heard some things that were not so magical. I feel we're a family. I think that demonstrates here tonight. We work hard together. We know that we have each other's back. I see the magic and the wonder in our child's eye. It brings us to joy to hear their questions and to share their world with us. It's magical to see their resilience in life, in our students, and see them be so loving when life has not been loving to them. It has been magical to have families back in our building through family nights and peacemakers as families and have that good face-to-face relationship conversations with our families because they need that as much as we do. My greatest desire for our school is to be full of magical moments and wonderment for all that walk through our door and have that feeling. Which leads me to my second ideal, which is opportunity. I've come to believe in my thirty years of being an educator that I can't make anybody do anything. I can't make you learn. I can't make you read. I can't make you write, but I can provide you an opportunity to learn. I can provide that opportunity to do you. And I want to provide the opportunity to our students, to our staff, to our families, to take a risk, to have grit when learning something new for ourselves and even for our students. The honor, the opportunity to share the honor and the privilege that we have teaching the children that come into our building, because sometimes we're all they have. The opportunity to stand tall and proud as an educator, and I feel like education as a whole across the country has taken a sap. It's been dinged pretty bad. Now I'd like to invite you to the opportunity of candid conversations, crystal-clear goals and expectations, so there's no doubt in anyone, any employee's mind, what our goals and our vision is for ISD 709. The opportunity to share tangible appreciation of staff through monetary means. For example, even for the very example of CIT leaders that were paid a $500 stipend, but when it's put into our regular check, it's less than half, and I know I have a time. So could it be that our stipends increase so that we do receive a higher amount? Lastly, to take the opportunity to build relationships based on trust and mutual respect for one another so that all of us grow in magical moments. Thank you.
Next is Sophia Conley. On deck is Erica Drangler.
Hello, my name is Sophia Conley, and I am also from Laura McArthur. I want to share with you my experience as a student of Duluth Public Schools, and now I'm teaching in one. I was raised in West Duluth, fifty-seven to be exact. I attended Middleton, Ordean, and Morgan Park and Denfeld. I've always enjoyed school and even thought it was very, even though it was very hard, I had teachers constantly pushing me and raising me to my fullest potential. It wasn't until my sixth-grade year where I attended Ordean Middle School that I noticed some big discrepancies. Ordean was big and surrounded by a nice neighborhood. The building felt cleaner and it seemed to have more money. The students were mostly Caucasian, middle to high class, which was very shocking and surprising and really uncomfortable for me, actually, due to coming from Middleton and my own neighborhood and my own background. The teachers there, I obviously can't tell you one of them. I don't remember them. My parents enrolled into Ordean because they asked some very close friends who knew a lot knowledge of Duluth Public Schools, what's the best middle school? They said Ordean because of the money. More money meant more education, more resources. Even though that made a fennel case, it was my worst year ever. I then attended Morgan Park Middle School, and it felt like home. The school was still big, but it wasn't as clean. It looked rundown. It looked like there wasn't much money in it. The students were diverse in ethnicity and social class, and the teachers, I can actually remember some, specifically one, Katie Oliver. She changed my life. Why am I sharing this? I'm ashamed because as a young kid, I've always seen the difference but feeling it. It's pretty hurtful. Now, this is not to shame anyone or make anybody feel guilty. It's just my experience. And as a teacher now in this district, I feel it's necessary for me to share this experience because I know there's other children out there just like me. I always wanted to work at Laura McArthur, and when I was hired this year, it was a dream come true, literally. I shared it with my parents. I was super excited. I've always wanted to give back to my neighborhood, and teaching in this school helps me do that. Walking into the school and being shown my classroom felt like home. I love working here, and I love how much effort my colleagues put into their job. I have witnessed these teachers go above and beyond to meet the needs of their students. Many spend their own money on various things like, yes, teachers be teachers, clothing, food, even fun activities or gifts on the holidays. They're not only giving their money but time to these students. They do the typical come in early or stay late, but also stop to give their time and attention to children who feel less hurt. They will stop in the hallway on the way to a meeting or to the print yard to make sure a child is okay regardless if it's their student or not. Not only do I see them in their money and time, but they give their all. When they are tired from a day of their own personal life, they still choose to put the students first to ensure that the school feels welcoming and that every day, even multiple times throughout the day, is always a fresh start. Because of all they do, regardless if our school isn't the cleanest or the best neighborhood or have the most resources or money, these children remember these teachers for how much they value their running and their lives. Yes, we are struggling every day. We are faced with high caseloads, behaviors, basic needs, and lack of academics, but these teachers, parents, and staff choose to give their all to ensure these kids have the best education and positive futures as possible, even when the odds are completely against them. So what I ask of you is to listen to what we have to say, recognize and notice and do something about the discrepancies, provide the support and resources we need. With your help and support, we can be sure to do your vision, to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare your students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and in this wider world. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Erica.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Erica Drangler. I'm the PE teacher at Laura McArthur. And I just want to say how proud I am to work with all of these amazing people. We have incredible things happening in our school every single day, and it really is remarkable. The other thing I want to take a quick minute to talk about is kind of a notion for the physical education department. And I just want to make sure it's brought to attention because I don't know where else to put it. We have been told we're in a curriculum adoption year, and in the past, in the FIA department and with other departments, you know, English, language arts, when they're going through an adoption year, there's usually some funds attached to that to buy materials or bulk healthier materials. And we were told as a FIA department, there is nothing for that even though we're in an adoption year. And that's a concern because my budget is $150 a year, which I'm grateful for that, but I could replace my gloops for that. And so what we have trying to expand programming and make programming that really meets the rigor of the standards for physical education, we need to make sure there's allocated funds in an adoption cycle that we can replace and then extend our resources and curriculum. FIA is kind of an expensive area to fund. And then the other thing I want to say about that is that when we don't appropriately fund, I think that automatically leads to inequities because there are schools in our district that have endowments and super-involved PTAs, and there are schools that don't. And so what you can get from your school is very different. And so I don't want to get to a place where our kids are getting different experiences in their education based on where they live as far as what's provided in the physical education setting. So that's all. Thank you so much for your time.
One more opportunity for anyone from public comment? Thank you. Moving on to our next item, but thank you. It's item number seven. It's reading communications and petitions of which board members we have none this month. So that brings us to number eight. It's the report of the superintendent. And I then turn it over to Superintendent Magus.
Thank you. Trying to get things hooked up here. We, our TV went out earlier, so we're looking up this one.
And is that more for our audience?
If you want to turn it this way a little bit.
Or more for us?
It was for the audience.
Okay, that's fine. Do you have our, is it on our workbook?
Turn it this way a little, just a little bit. Thank you so much.
Give me one second. Try to do the right.
I appreciate it.
Can I just, just a question.
Yeah. Sorry. So tonight, we have, thank you. We have my superintendent's report. We have a number of topics. A few things were, but we won't be going into great depth with them, so don't worry. It won't be an hour presentation. But first and foremost, we're going to be doing some school board appreciation because this is the, this is the school board appreciation month, and we are very, very pleased to have some special, special sharing in just one second. Then we'll go into our student reports, which we usually do first. A little update on strategic planning as well as legislative update. An update from Principal Sebo on career and technical education. District website update from our communications officer, Adele Wells. And a quick update on where we're at with our district services center, a little bit on superintendent mid-year evaluation, as well as the community and schools outreach update. So today, we have from the City of Duluth, a proclamation from Brianna Ellison. Brianna, you want to come forward and share the mayor's proclamation? We're honored to have you.
I can use the mic. So hosting here, it feels a little weird having me back here. Love to babysit up here. Say it to everyone here, right? How is everyone doing tonight? Really, really wonderful to be here. Chair Low Hall, vice chair of all the, um, board members. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Larson, and I'm really excited to be here. Most people know this about me, but I'd love to share it. I am also a licensed educator, so public education is very near to my heart. Before I talk your ear off, I'll just get to it. Whereas the City of Duluth recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas the City of Duluth appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure efficient and effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged of representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, and whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, and whereas local school governors are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, I, Emily Larson, mayor of the City of Duluth, do officially proclaim February 28th, 2023, as school board member appreciation day in the City of Duluth. Thanks.
Thank you.
I thought you were here to do a proclamation for the students that did the hands.
And then we also have a presentation of certificates. Patty and I worked on this as well. Wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much. And so these are certificates of appreciation from the Minnesota Association of School Boards. So it's in recognition for your dedication to our education of our students, and I have one for each of you. So this is a certificate of appreciation. Thank you. Save this one for Kelly. So thank you. And I'll hang on to this for when we're here at theater. But we just wanted to take a moment. I know the work of a school board is never easy. And I know that there's, there's many different interests that we, we listen to and think about. And some of the, again, the decisions you make as school board members can be challenging at times. And I just want to say how much I, as superintendent, appreciate the work you do on behalf of our students, our communities, and our staff. So thank you. I know it's the last day of the month, but still, school board appreciation. Thank you very much from the school district, behalf of the city as well. So.
Are we gonna take a picture? Like, would you do the opportunity of that?
It'd be good. Yeah, let's do that.
Can we do it right over here though?
Come on up.
Wait, don't forget the proclamation.
And are you gonna be in picture too, Brianna?
You're all children, we'll see that, so excuse me.
Yeah.
I mean, Brianna, you want to hold the congratulations?
And then you guys just kind of come closer to us, take us, you know, look please. Who are we looking at?
Anthony, go this way. No, that way. Anthony, that way. I'll go this way a little bit.
Look at Adele first. Let's look at Adele.
Student boarder up on the end, coming a little closer. And there you go. Now smile. Cheese.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure. Yes. Member Law Board Tenor.
Yeah, I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, on behalf of myself, but I hope the board thinks I'm doing it on behalf of them as well. But just really thank you, you know, I know all of us, I think, feel it's an honor to serve on the Duluth Public School Board. And so it's, it's, it's nice to be recognized, but it's also, I think, a real honor for us to do the work of, of the board. And so I just, thank you for recognizing us. But importantly, I think we all work really hard to be effective and to be out in the community and out in our schools and out at events in lots of different ways. And we really all, I think, really strive to do the work that we are, by state statute, do as school board members. So just thank you and again, from the board, I speak that we all feel it's an honor to serve within Duluth Public Schools.
Thank you. And Patty, thank you for putting together certificates and getting everything organized. Much appreciated. And thank you again, Brianna, on behalf of the board and the administration, the city for the recognition.
And I will come and work for us someday too. We know that you coach and that you teach, so.
We try periodically, but on the day that the mayor's honoring us, I shouldn't say one of the best people. Thank you. But today, we continue on and we have two school board student representatives here to share their monthly reports. And this is, this is really the first time. We have Elsa Priest and Lauren Molitor. And I'm not sure who wants to go first.
Elsa's up there first. We'll go in that order. No, you can sit.
All right. So East High School just returned from our winter break and we're getting back to our regular school week. Registration is coming up and students are thinking about what classes they want to sign up for next year. And we have some ways of advertising electives and other classes that you can take to know their options. The week before break, both the Nordic and Alpine ski teams went to the state east. The Nordic team won the state title with five East students headed to nationals in Alaska and four headed to nationals in Alaska this March. Winter seasons are wrapping up and we have the boys swimmers and divers headed to state. Boys hockey and girls and boys basketball are currently headed to the section playoffs. The knowledgeable team has also grown much in size this year with their last regular season meeting Thursday. The boys basketball team is also nearing the end of their season with only two games left in the regular season. We had our sweetheart dance for upperclassmen and invited sophomores on February 4th at the depot. And that went well for everyone. Earlier in the month, we had our ready grade week with assemblies, after school activities, and dress up days to celebrate. The activities were enjoyed by students. Students expressed a variety of opinions on the ready grade candidate election process and winners, however, it was different this year. A new method used the term Mr. and Mrs. East or Mr. and Mrs. East. They're no longer used and the senior class was able to nominate whoever their top 10 choices were regardless of gender. Then the student body was able to vote for three winners instead of two, not separated by gender, which we named the top dogs. This was a great way to make the elections more inclusive. However, most of the students in the student forum expressed disappointment in this process the way it went this year, like the outcomes of the process. And they felt it ended up being less fair than before. According to the forum, the three winners were all males who were very similar, and this made others feel that the contest was not fair and that the point of the ready grade week had been lost. All of the student leaders, however, are working together to find a way to remain gender neutral and inclusive in our activities while also being fair to everyone. Another topic discussed in the student forum was the areas in which the school could be improved in just any way. This was an open question to see what's inside in general. Most students brought up teachers' personal needs, for example, more art supplies or experiment materials. Students felt concerned that teachers often paid for these class materials out of pocket and wish classes, especially the visual arts, had more funding. The junior rotarians are creating a proposal for the Harbertown Rotary for what they would do with a $1,000 grant. This grant is given to each school represented at the Rotary Club so long as the project is approved. And the junior rotarians at East have struggled because many projects are restricted from being done at East if they are not also done at Denfeld and like the other schools. So this has caused a bit of conflict in choosing a project that would work. This also caused a bit of conflict for the exec board earlier in the year when they were looking to buy a new sound system for the gym. They were not able to buy the sound system at first, at the time, since Denfeld did not also have a new sound system. This has since been resolved. But the conflict of not being able to move forward with projects, so with other schools not having them, remains for some groups. In the case of the Rotary grant, this may come in the way since each school receives the same amount of money when they're represented. And so it gets a little tricky with what project they choose to do. And the rotarians are pitching their idea for a grant in outcome of this.
Thank you. And what a great first report. Lauren?
There's been a lot going on at Denfeld lately. This year has been our first school year 100% back to normal post-COVID. And while I could just sit here in line and say that everything's, that there's only that few struggles that lead to the truth. Last year was rough for everyone, but coming back this year has really proven to all of us that the Hunter pride we share keeps our schools strong. To get the nitty gritty, not very fun things out of the way, Denfeld's school improvement plan for 2223 has been submitted and features two goals. One, to increase attendance, and the other, to increase students feeling safe at school. Currently, only 44% of students enrolled at Denfeld are at school 90% of the time or more. This has driven a steady 16% increase since 2018. In the, in the school climate survey sent out to students at the end of school year last year, the majority of students who took the survey reported not feeling safe in school. Specifically for Denfeld, the bathrooms are a huge contributing factor. With the school improvement plan, we hope to focus on these problems and hope to improve them. Now on to the fun stuff. The Denfeld Theater Department performs their one-act play, I Hate Valentine's during Wynn for students and, and in the evening for the community on February 10th. My longtime friend, Madge Gentman, is president of the Drama Club, and here's what she had to say about this performance. Quote, "We had an amazing time doing it, but unfortunately we didn't make it to sections. The cast was so positive and it's great to see it. People who've never done theater before showed their colors and it was just an all-around great time," end quote. Speaking of Wynn and Valentine's Day, Denfeld's GSA hosted a Valentine's Day party during Wynn on Valentine's Day, where any student who's a part of the LGBTQ+ community or those who are simply allies could come meet current members of the club while decorating Valentine's Day themed cookies. The Denfeld BSA group collaborated with the exec board to make a Black History Month themed spirit week for students to participate in the week before break. Some of the, some of the dress up days included Melon and Monday, where students were to dress in shades of brown, and Class Color Day with each grade assigned color correlating with African flag. Freshmen in green, sophomores in yellow, juniors in red, and seniors in black. It also included decorating halls in African flag colors after school and a Black History Month assembly put on by students, which took on, which took place on February, on February 17th. Speaking of assemblies, we also had our annual athletic court assembly on Wednesday the 15th, which is a tradition that was started by our beloved Central High School, where after a beautiful rendition of Adele's sculpture of Make Me Feel My Love originally performed by Ralph Dillan, was performed by a trio including senior Olivia Mackey, junior Liv Krishner, and sophomore Kate Krishner. And a melody of songs from Les Mis played by the orchestra. Denfeld seniors Leo Newland and Charles Charlie jumped in and were crowned kings. This year's athletic court lineup was unique in a way that out of 10 seniors that were nominated, six were male and four were female, instead of the traditional five and five. Denfeld also hosted its first family feedback and fun night on Monday, February 13th, in conjunction with spring conferences, which took place on February 13th and 15th. This event featured a meal, state of the school address, gathering stakeholder feedback, and grocery bingo. Now on to sports and other activities. Starting off with boys basketball from, with a quote from junior Ethan Starr said, quote, "We're doing great. We have a better record than last year, currently at 10-12, and we just beat Zimmerman by 20 points. We're doing a lot better than last year, mostly because of team improvements and teamwork," end quote. Next, we have boys hockey with quote coming from junior Connor Doyle, quote, "We're doing pretty well, not as well as we expected, but not horrible either. We lost a lot of talent when we lost last year's seniors, but we're still playing through," end quote. Next, we have girls basketball with a quote from sophomore Callie Magreener, quote, "Our scores were not great, but we have a sense of spirit. We love bringing the Denfeld center pride and spirit to every school we go to. Our sport, our sports don't work like that, but the team were doing well." Next, we have Denfeld Dance Team, which just went to sections with our quote coming from sophomore Kylie Keller. Bless you. Quote, "The Shorelander's dance season wasn't great competition wise. We lost a lot more this season than we have in past seasons. We placed fifth in jazz and sixth in kick at sections, which is the worst placement we've received in kicks since 2016. Despite not doing well at competitions this year, we had a very strong and hard working team this season," end quote. And for Denfeld cheer, we have quote from senior Leah Clark, quote, "We're having fun and we're doing good. We've been learning new stunts and we have a new routine that we're doing, which at the time was the next day, 216. We've been doing a bunch of team bonding and our senior night will be March 2nd." Next, we have Golds, which is something new to Denfeld, with our quote coming from, from junior Ian Twani. In Golds, we haven't really done much. We've been doing a lot of group work and collecting data from students. Recently, we've been looking at how we can represent more of the cultures we have through our Denfeld. Currently, we're working hard on ways to positively represent Denfeld on social media and how we can make changes within Denfeld for good in the future. And finally, we have the Denfeld Speech Team with a quote from yours truly. Quote, "Speech has had a wonderful season so far, with at least one team member breaking in the final round at every competition we've attended. We persevered even with a two-week break in between our first and second competition of the season. It's been so much fun watching our new team members figure out their places on our team and having those aha moments when they figure out what category they belong in and want to compete in," end quote. Back to Denfeld as a whole, we had our first soaring Hunter student recognition activity for those meeting and exceeding our expectations. We took almost 200 students to see Wakanda Forever on Thursday, January 26th. We also celebrated our Hunter's of the month, which is two students from each grade level who were nominated by teachers for going above and beyond expectations. They were, they were rewarded with, on the week of January 6th, with a lunch provided by Olive Garden. For the winner and a plus one, the winner also received a gift bag with Denfeld goodies inside. Something new coming to Denfeld is mental health-based therapy dogs. Students had access to some very sweet therapy dogs on Tuesday, the 14th during Wynn. The new steeple for the iconic Denfeld Tower was installed on Saturday, the 25th, which signified the end of a two-year-long project. In additions to this steeple being attached, some other repairs were made to our tower, including repainting clock faces, replacing some of the banners on the clocks, and some other structural repairs. Speaking of repairing things, some members of the community and students from East High School made new plans for our clock faces so the tower clocks will actually tell time again. Another addition for members of the community, a group of people are working on our pipe organ. The goal is to have it fixed up and 100% functional again by its 100th anniversary in 2027. When we came back from our winter break, a sophomore class had the opportunity to choose one of two field trips that will help them explore career and college options that they have in the future. They can pick from attending Construct Tomorrow, an event held at the DECT that focuses on jobs in trade, like construction and electric work on April 26th, or they can attend a college and career fair at Fond du Lac on March 15th. Some more upcoming events at Denfeld include our eighth grade orientation on March 7th. Denfeld Orchestra will be going to Scholasica for a combined concert on March 8th. Denfeld Choirs and Orchestra combined for a short concert on March 9th, and that is one of the Denfeld of the Month.
Good job. And I actually have Destiny Williams' ALC report as well. So this is Destiny Williams, and she is our student rep from our AEO ALC. In the last several months, we have had a bunch of fun on several ALC excursions, including bowling, hiking at Tisher Creek, and doing water ecology, ice fishing at Caribou Lake, and some college visits. We also have monthly staff versus students basketball games at the YMCA. Once per month, we are lucky enough to have special lunches brought in from places like Jimmy John's, McDonald's, and Olive Garden. Students have been busy working on classes for their third quarter and staying after school to work on credit recovery and to catch up on missing work. We are also currently raising trout in our commons area as a collaboration with trout in the classrooms. We will be releasing the fish in the spring at a local stream. My apologies for not making tonight's board meeting. We will be attending the COW meeting next week to talk about integration specialists and the need for them in the Duluth Public Schools. So that's from Destiny Williams.
Thank you. What great student reports. Really appreciate them. And very, very full of all the many good things happening in our schools. I know that they're, as you said, they're, it's not without challenge sometimes, but I think the good far outshines the challenge. So thank you. Just a few quick updates on a variety of things. Our strategic planning update, as you know, our strategic planning team met on February 1st, and on February 1st, we were working on finalizing our district vision card as well as continuing that work on the three-year operational plan. We worked as a, as a team with our Cabinet Plus group to further that work on the three-year operational plan. And we're going to be meeting on March 8th, next Wednesday, for our final meeting with that strategic planning team to go deeper into that plan, as well as to have some concluding activities and celebration and recognition of the work, hard work that's been done. We are also working with you as a board on finding a date for our next work session to finalize our mission, vision, and values that we started previously. So far in our poll, March 9th has been the most popular date, but are there other dates that you want us to consider? From what I understand, too, the timeline isn't quite as crunched as we thought it was going to be because we're looking at, originally taking it forward at the March board meeting as a final product, but we're looking now at April. So if we need a little more time, we can extend that a bit. Questions?
Oh, I have to say, so that is EAC. March 9th is EAC.
EAC, so that could be.
So just, but I'll fill it.
Yes, that could be a challenge too. As far as legislative updates, our lobbying is very, very important. We heard tonight many, many comments about a need for greater resources, and we have added many, many resources to our schools. I mean, I, I I mean, we heard that there's still a huge gap between the needs and the resources we have, but even though we've added counselors and deans of students and MTSS coordinators and interventionists and raised the pay for paras and other things, I think that there is still a great need there. There are efforts that are made, but it doesn't completely close the gaps that we have. And I think some of what we're trying to do is focus on our lobbying with the State Senate and State House of Representatives, as well as the governor's office. And the governor's report on the twenty-seventh, yesterday, they had a finance report in which they recognized the budget surplus still being, it went from seventeen point six billion dollars, now it's seventeen point five billion dollars, but it's still a very, very similar positive financial outlook. There was concern that it might dip significantly because of recession and things like that, but we seem to be holding pretty steady. So many of the bills are being heard related to funding, related to possible increase in five, five percent in the funding formula. Right now, the governor's proposal is four percent to two percent, but we're hoping it will go up from there. We also were able to engage in significant lobbying efforts with board members and with administrators and also with the Duluth Federation of Teachers during our Duluth Days. And so keeping up those lobbying efforts to make sure that we get additional funding will be important. And one very important date is next Tuesday. The Finance Committee is going to be holding a hearing on the House Bill, House Finance Bill three thirty-six, which is to increase a one-time payment in special ed funding. If you remember, there was a special ed funding anomaly that ended up costing the district five million dollars over the course of four to five years in the, between two thousand fourteen and two thousand nineteen. And so we're seeking two million dollars in compensation for that funding anomaly. So I think the fact that they're wanting testimony in their hearing, that two million dollars, that could be twenty teachers per year, or it could be significant curriculum adoption, or it could be many, many other things that would benefit the schools. We have to think about it, though, is that's a one-time piece of funding, so it's not going to last forever.
Were there other, were there other schools that also suffered that anomaly? That kind of partnering with us last time?
Not to the degree that we were. There were a couple of districts that maybe had seventy-five thousand dollars worth of funding, negative impact, but to have nearly five million dollars over the course of four years, that was, we were by far the most impacted. And that was partly because there was a year that they locked in the funding, was, we were like, basically ended up paying twice as much as we normally would towards the charter school special education needs, and so that locked us in at that point. But that funding piece is not something that will continue. The pieces that we're really trying to strive for are the percentage increases in the per-people funding, as well as the special education cross-subsidy. Cross-subsidy for the public, I know most of the board knows, but the cross-subsidy is where we're paying out a general education for our special education student needs. And that is basically eleven million dollars a year that we pay out of general ed. Right now, the governor has proposed fifty percent, which would give us probably an extra five, five point five million dollars per year, which would be then tied to inflation. That could do a lot to add to the services that we need. It's also important, what we've discovered through our strategic planning process, to do deep needs assessment, so that when we have money come forward, that we're being very, very thoughtful on what is going to make the biggest difference in student outcomes. We know that there are many, many needs and it's, even if we get additional funding, we need every need that's out there. And so making sure that we're prioritizing and thinking about the kids first and what's going to impact our student safety and student learning and student behavioral outcomes, that's very important to us as we move forward.
Clarification, so you said it was number two thirty-six at their hearing?
I think it was three.
Three thirty-six?
Let me see, let me go back.
Thank you.
It was House Bill three thirty-six.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent, just a quick question, will you be testifying?
Yes, so I'll be testifying. I've talked to Chair Loehbold about possibly having a board member represent too, and I know that number Loehbold is speaking out as well.
I'm going down the very next day, so if there's an opportunity for one of us to go on March seventh in the morning, it would be, he has to be there by ten, ten fifteen, and then we have a committee, the whole meeting in the afternoon, so it's kind of a quick turnaround. And then personally, I'm going down on March eighth. It's the AM SD lobbying opportunities, but through our lobbyist Jeff Anderson and just my own contacts, I will be meeting with some of our local and some of the other education committee people on the eighth as well.
If you are interested, do you want members to contact you?
For sure, yeah. Reach out if you think you could go down with Superintendent Magus for that morning.
And Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Zunich, may be joining us as well. Next, something that Principal Sebo has been waiting for all evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Not only is she about displaying the beautiful plants from our from the culture program and getting our career and technical education showcase set up, but she is here sharing information about Career and Technical Education Month. It was a brief update.
There are a couple of things that I really drink the Kool-Aid of, so to speak. Did I just eat myself? You know Kool-Aid is? Okay. And Career and Tech Ed is one of them. It is definitely a passion for me, and so taking this on as the coordinator when we change those positions up has been the best thing ever. It is one of the things that I love to give my time up to, and so that makes it easier. It is Career and Tech Ed Month. It is the last day of Career and Tech Ed Month. And last year, I prepared a pretty elaborate slideshow to show you how funding works, where things come from, what articulated credit is. I think every other year, we'll do a deep dive. So this year, we just wanted to give an overview and really talk about a few things. Last year, if you remember, one of the things that I said we really needed was dedicated funding. We needed to make sure that we had funding set aside and budgets ready that really supported what those programs needed. For example, to run one section, one semester of an intro to foods class, it's about six thousand dollars worth of supplies. We can't charge students for that. We can't run the class if we can't buy the food. And so just trying to be really clear, so that when we meet with finance, we can identify what our needs are and then plan our sections accordingly. And so our teachers worked really hard to identify what those supply budgets really were, what our annual costs are for our software. You met our students that use, Don used the word CAD. It's for computer-aided drafting. We use SolidWorks. That's an expensive program. It requires pretty high-functioning computers. So don't tell anyone, but the Career and Tech Ed computer that I know is in the district is beautiful. And so we really tried hard to lay out what those annual costs are, so that when we meet with finance, we have a clear picture of what we need to ask for, and then based on the parameters we get, we can plan sections accordingly. The other thing that we did last year was we had our teachers identify outdated equipment that has failed or was likely to fail within the next two years. The federal grants that districts can apply for to buy equipment is for new and innovative programs. It cannot supplant, it cannot replace what we already have. That is not what that's designed for and it's a really small budget. And so we listed all of the things that needed repair or replacement and it was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we met with finance and they found us the money. It was like Christmas in the Career and Tech Ed department over the summer. And so facilities work with us, finance work with us, curriculum department work with us to get all of that material here in the school. Remember, there were still massive shipping delays. So some of those pieces are still trickling in. If you had asked Don to show you his shop, the new piece of equipment that was delivered today is massive. It takes up half of one of the smaller spaces. But it has really meant that our programs have been able to grow and thrive and we've been able to do what the curriculum is designed to do. So we are definitely appreciative of the support at the district level, the use of some of those one-time funds to give us the boost and bring us into, or a little closer to being in the current decade. So those are just a couple of follow-ups from last year when we talked about some of our greatest needs. We've done a great job of doing that. Every five years, programs have to go through a formal approval process that is a massive undertaking. This was our year. So last year, our teachers did a lot around their budgets and finance. This year, they had to do a lot about their curriculum, their advisory boards, their syllabi, the courses. We did a lot of work there and all of our programs are now finally approved and done. And that only has to happen every five years. So that was a huge process for our staff this year. And remember, a good chunk of our staff are people that were pulling out of industry and don't have a teaching background, so a lot of this is burdening each of them and they need a lot of support. So they've been amazing to work with. Other big picture things, we advocate for funding at the Career and Tech Ed level, both at the state and at the national level. I was invited to travel with the Minnesota contingent of thirty-five people to go to Washington DC. Never been there, we're going in March. Super intimidated, but it's going to be fine. I don't know if I'm going to survive the metro, so if I don't make it back, it's because I'm lost in Washington DC. They promised me we'd travel in groups. But that is happening in March. The funding that we talked about as a consortium is, does come from the federal level and there are a lot of asks that we have there. It is so small and so restricted that it's really not sustaining and it's really incredibly important, critical bipartisan supporting Career and Tech Ed programs. Our industry is asking for that support, our colleges, our local secondary programs, training. Three point eight is on the beginning?
I just got.
I had two people sneak up on me to prepare everything.
Watch out!
Yeah. So I, you know, would love to provide a follow-up there, but we are going to be advocating at the federal level for a few things as well. And so the only updates that I'll give you as a district this year are on this two-page document that I created myself, so please don't tell me if these got any grammatical errors. I had to hand-feed these one at a time through my color printer, because they jammed if I put in more than one. So if there's printing errors, let me know, I do have some backup copies. But we really wanted a nice snapshot to show our families, to show you, to show our students as they get ready to register, what is Career and Tech Ed? One of the questions that we ask our students as a consortium is, did you take a Career and Tech Ed course? Did you know about them? If we don't label them that way, students don't know that graphic arts is Career and Tech Ed. So we are trying to be really clear about what those are without overwhelming them with information. And so you'll see a couple of new things that are happening and growing. We are adding some courses. Aerospace physics used to fall under communication programs. It is now its own program in the transportation field, and so there's a lot of room for growth there. We live in a town that is desperate for workers in that field and we are exploring some really exciting and unique partnerships with industry in the area that I think we really could tell you more about next year. So that is a program that is growing. The other new courses we are adding, there's a new one in the agriculture program. We now have fully certified teachers, both at Denfeld and East, and so we're adding more one-hour options. We've talked a lot about the restrictions that block classes put on our students and how it limits who can take them. The more one-hour classes we can offer, the more these programs can grow. So you'll see that there are more one-hour classes being added, including a new introduction to agriculture, food, and natural resource sciences, both at Denfeld and East. We'd love to get a greenhouse going there. We have this amazing construction class that could help us build it. And then we could eliminate the block classes altogether, with the exception of the forest, because I can't just grow one of those at Denfeld. So that's a change in the ag program. We have a new, fully licensed agriculture teacher here, Sonia Hopkinson, who is on an overnight field trip to Camp Remington with her students right now, doing some really cool things. She has also hired part-time as a work-based learning coordinator to help us develop a program for Career and Tech Ed advanced students who are ready to walk into some internships with local businesses. So that's another area you'll see of growth that is mandated by Perkins Five, the newest generation, and then that's how we're working to grow in that way. The other new courses are on the backside, hospitality and tourism. We hope to bring full-time foods back to East as soon as possible, too. The restaurant, in how it used to exist, was just not fiscally sustainable. It required three full-time adults to run a course that typically had less than ten students in it. It was wonderful, but it's just not financially sustainable. So we will offer the same courses that Denfeld does and hope to start a student deli, which is what we were built to do, actually. The setup is correct in the kitchen. And there's an addition of a new course, international cuisine. Maybe next year's showcase will have some food for you, too, which she was unable to join us here tonight. So again, we have a full-time foods program at Denfeld. We hope to bring it back to East. We both found the same teacher and Denfeld won, so we're going to need to find another instructor there. I don't think we have any other new, oh, yes, we do. We have a brand-new program that we're tiptoeing into. In the bottom corner, you'll see that we are adding an AP computer science course. We have long identified it as a need for us across the board because it applies in so many ways, so we are tiptoeing into this. We are running it as an AP because when you take an AP or advanced placement course, there's a test you can take that could earn you some potential college credit. So we'll find instructors for that, get them credentialed in Career and Tech Ed, and then also land them to be AP-trained.
Other than that, yeah, sorry. What do computer science principals, what is that? What kind of?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. Here's a lovely course description in the handbook. It's some general, I don't know if anybody's in here, who knows? I'll find out, won't you?
I can have a handful. There's copies of them on.
Yes, so in the course description book. So that is our new courses for next year. We are almost at capacity. Don Simons teaches on an overload and every hour of every day. He has more kids in there than he probably should, but he's got way more energy than one person should. Our construction program is full-time right now. Our ag programs at both sites continue to grow. Engineering, Don's Counterheart at Denfeld is almost full-time and probably will be next year. And then we remain limited by facilities and staff. So when we have to share a Kim Olson nursing instructor, we're not going to find another special unicorn like that, so we have to share. Graphic arts is another one that's tough to fill. So we're just at capacity in some programs, which is a fantastic place to be. But the nature of these programs means that we are always meeting with industry and those advisory boards and looking at what we're doing and doesn't meet up with what you need at the college level when they come to you, the training program, or the workplace when they come to you. And so we're always changing and growing at a much faster pace than most other curriculum areas, but due to space and staffing, we're almost maxed out in how many programs we can offer at the moment.
How do our programs and how much we offer kind of compare to, you know, maybe a district that is about our same size, like maybe a man cave? Do you know? Are we, do we offer a rich variety, according to the state?
Yeah, different schools do things differently. And so some will have bigger districts, will have a high school that's focused on Career and Tech Ed, and so students can come and go out of there or stay there and focus there. Or different schools will focus on different programs. We allow our students to travel between high schools, so they get everything. So I think in that respect, we offer a lot more because we can offer things at both sites, which presents its own problems, but it's a huge opportunity for us as well. The other thing I would say is that we are, the other bit of information I gave you is consortium information, and the data is based on a year ago when we were a fourteen, did those go around? Okay. When we were a fourteen district consortium. But this year was our first year officially absorbing the Carlton Plus Two Consortium. So there are now twenty-two schools in our consortium. It's created some really great conversations and opportunities. We've helped that much smaller consortium grow. We've learned from them. But you can see down the list there in the Lake Superior Consortium of just those fourteen schools originally, by the numbers, how many students took those courses. What I will say about that number, so when you see a hundred and seventy students took agriculture courses, one student might count twice that, two courses. So it's the number of students enrolled. Yep. And Duluth Public Schools are the bulk of those numbers. The rest of the schools in our consortium are so much smaller than us that they offer careless programs and can offer a much smaller scale as well. So I think that is all that I had to go over. We are really excited about the growth we continue to have. This is a group that works really well together as a team across the district. We do have programs at the ALC as well. Aerospace is there, business is there, and of course, work-based learning, and they continue to grow with us. It is really nice to have. It is really nice to have students back fully. Post-pandemic now, our traveling contests and meetings that our kids do in their clubs are coming back again. They've been really limited even through last year. And field trips are back. Field trips with industry, guest figures in industry are one of the keystones of these programs and being able to go out and see what a workplace looks like, what they do there has just been a fantastic thing to connect and get back to. I'm just super excited that we're able to do that this year. So, growing there, too. Proud of the work we're doing, proud of the kids, you saw some of it today. We've got quite a few new young teachers who have little kids at home and so we were a little limited. I don't want to say that old people were here. But that's what they would tell you, that they're the tenure to cur. But if you have any questions, want to tour our facilities and programs, I know I had said we would do that last year and the year got away from me, but we have some pretty amazing facilities and a lot of new equipment that we would love to show off. So I'll try and set up a tour. I'll meet you at Denfeld and take you around and you can go visit the greenhouse here. Nice to walk through the school forest, see the nesting eagles and all those lovely things. So, thank you for your time today, thank you for visiting with our students. They love to show off what they're doing and they're really excited about it. Any other questions for them?
I just, thank you, Dinette. This was really wonderful. It was great to talk with the students and you could just see their enthusiasm for their classes and what they're inspiring to do after as well, so that was great. Can you send us these by email? I like to use them when I'm writing with folks and other conversations I have in the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I do want to thank you out there to say thank you as well. I know this is, you mentioned it earlier, but I know this is one of your passions and one of your babies in terms of projects that you're moving forward and it's clear through how you're communicating, everything related to CT, so thank you for everything.
I too want to thank you for your vision and leadership in career and technical education. Not only are you running the largest high school in the district, but you're also the leader of career and technical education and makes us wonder how you're able to juggle so many things and I'm sure you ask yourself that sometimes.
Well, I didn't meet today and I haven't seen my husband since January, but otherwise it's super manageable.
Is there, do you know, is there any current legislation for career and tech ed where the governor is going to, you know, want to designate so much money to her career and tech? I'll look as well.
So I think at the state level, a lot of the pushes around teachers, this is a really unique area to try and find people. Like I said, we're typically pulling them out of industry where they're making a lot more money and not working with high school kids, which you have to have a love for. It's not always sunshine and roses, right? And so the support they need at that level to become fully licensed as a teacher, to move through the tiers, there's some growth and some movement there. Don, I keep throwing him out, but he's just such a go-getter, is working through one of those pilot projects so that we don't have to continue getting him a tier-one license, which means he can't go through seniority or the salary schedule. I don't know if we'd let them do that or not, I'm not sure, so we'll do. But as a teacher under a contract in the state of Minnesota, having a tier-two, tier-three, tier-four license is really critical. So there's a push at the state level to help them with that, to find more pathways to get people licensed. I need a licensed contractor to replace Tony when he retires. I don't necessarily need a math teacher who, I mean, I'll take one, who builds as a hobby. I mean, we can help anyone become licensed in that, but we really need those people who are, have experience in the trades, have experience in industry. That's who we want in these programs. And when we pull an educator, a teacher who went to college for that, we also still have to get them the skills and the connection to industry so that they're able to teach it to their students. So it's just a really unique area to try and find staff for. And licensing at the state level is where I think a lot of that is coming from. At the federal level, that's where the bulk of the grant funding comes from. Districts have to support that on their own. A lot of these are really expensive programs to run. They have to have smaller class sizes, the equipment needs are heavy. We're sending kids on field trips. There's just a lot of expense that comes with that and the consortium can't support it fully. There's just not that much money to go around, so.
One more, just, how are we promoting all of this as kids are signing up for classes at those schools?
So that can be a hot topic, depending on who you talk to, because everybody wants to pull their, we're all prepping over this to get. But this is one of those pushes, is just creating a really clear picture of what career and tech ed is, a quick summary of what it can mean for you, and just an overview of what those courses are. So when our eighth graders come in and they're brand-new to high school, they have an understanding from middle school of what world language classes might be like, of what. But the middle school tech ed courses, which don't actually fall under federal tech ed funding and legislature, are so different than the career-driven, industry-driven, that it's just, it's a whole new. We have to help them understand what that is and what that looks like at high school and what it can mean for them. These are high-demand, high-wage jobs in our area that will have you in that high-demand, low-demand job pretty quick after high school in a job you love, making an income that supports a lifestyle you wanna have, so.
So are these given to eighth graders, then?
They will be, I just finished them. So when he goes to the eighth grade, probably not paper copies, but there will be linked on our, with our registration materials.
We can help you with the print shop so you don't have to feed them through one by one for an eighth grader.
I would have set up a print shop, kind of have them done earlier, but.
You do amazing work, Dinette, and just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are our students able to sign up for more than one area?
Absolutely.
Or do they do that over a number of years? I mean, if they want to go finance and then maybe health sciences.
They can do it all. It's really limited by the sixth period a day. So you met some of our engineering students today. The one that spoke is Parker Dalek. I think he's in maybe one social studies class and the rest of his day is with Don in engineering. So he's fulfilled all of his other requirements. He has packed his day with the classes that he enjoys. He serves as a leader with some of the younger students and then he's really doing a lot of independent work because that's what he's ready for. So he has really excelled and advanced in that one area. But we do have students who will take graphic arts and business or, it's really a pick and choose and we want them to do that. We want a solid introductory course for all of our programs and then you can advance and move through, too.
And then they're all able to meet their graduation requirements and needs?
Yes, and so one of the things I noted on there, thank you for bringing that up, nice cue, some of them will actually need other requirements, too. The aerospace physics class, for example, meets enough of the physics standards that it meets the physics, physics or chem requirement for students so they can take that as their junior or senior science class. Graphic arts meets the art standard, so it can serve there. That is another area that I think we could and should explore more is how some of these classes can meet other requirements and not just elective requirements.
Thank you.
I think I shared this last year, but my daughter had taken the aerospace for her physics and when we were going around to colleges, they were just like, that's all they wanted to talk about was that physics class she took, so that was really kind of phenomenal. But my last question I just had for you is, do parents have access to this as well?
They will, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Like I said, Jin has finished it, so.
Okay, excellent.
It is really, really hard to profess it.
It was a very good, you know, yeah.
Being a mom of an eighth grader coming here next year, I am just super excited to show this stuff, too.
It's something that our kids get excited about. High school feels really abstract when you're coming and kind of intimidating and just hearing the variety of things you can do at high school. We try to have really robust club and activity fairs to show them some of those things. Created really nice activity sheets. So every club and team has a sheet that looks the same. Here's what it needs, here's who can do it, here's what it starts. And then things like this. We've asked some of our students to help with departments creating videos to kind of highlight what it's like to take classes, not just in these areas, but in all of our areas. So we'll hope to build on that, too. So if you want to hear more about some of those electives in the English department, here's some students who have taken them, giving you a quick overview. You want to see the shop and what they do in there, here's a video. So that's another piece of the puzzle to really help showcase. Because the course catalog is great, but it is really overwhelming and it doesn't really give you an idea of what that class is like.
But I noticed that they're on our new website, our handbooks and catalogs.
Yes.
Which is actually the next part of my presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Dinette.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll lock up.
Yeah, we'll lock up.
And the next piece, as I mentioned, is a very brief update on our district website. Our communications officer, Adele Wellins, as you know, has made many changes to our website and format of our communication, building upon great communications work in the past. But taking a look at our website, there was a lot of work to be done, a lot to be considered. And one of the major projects that Adele has worked on is reframing our website. She's gonna share just a little bit about that for you.
Hello, thanks everyone for having me. As you probably have noticed, our new websites have launched. I launched seventeen websites on Friday, so that's one for each school district, one for each program, and one for the district itself. This process started about a year ago when I started looking at other websites and other companies to move forward with. And our current, our former CMS was not living up to standards. It wasn't user-friendly, it wasn't helpful, and it was just difficult to use. I believe our current one will be better for our employees to use. And it also moved in over, gave us the opportunity to ditch a lot of the old stuff that was just migrated over without any oversight. So I think that this new website will be more friendly to parents, community members, future employees, and students as well. There's still a lot that needs to be done, to be tweaked and added to the website. I have a huge to-do list as well as a form out to all staff members that they can submit edits or questions if they need to.
And just want to say thank you. It's, for a lot of people, the website is kind of the, it's kind of the director of first impressions for us. It's the first thing that people see. And I think some of the logo changes you've done and as well as some of the work you've done related to just that layout, simplifying it, that it was, as we've talked about, the website had become kind of a catch-all for everything and people, rather than wanting to, you know, use other things, like say having favorites and things, we just had so many links. And so it was kind of a rough compiling of many things and now the, it's much more streamlined and much, much better, better use. One thing I know we're, is we've, we talked about, we're working on updating the policies. That takes a lot of work to get in there and so we're making sure all of our policies are accessible there. But finishing that work, but should be done soon.
So right now, if our policies aren't available on this, is there no way for our community to look at our policies?
Okay, we need to get them by requesting them, they're also at each school, so. And we have paper copies of this.
And it'll be done very soon.
Yeah, it should be done by the end of the week, but we have three hundred and seventy-three policies and I have gotten through the six hundreds as of today.
And is that kind of like a, I mean, not to, is it like a copy and paste into a new site or are you re-taping them?
That is uploading, renaming them so that they are more efficient and easier for people to understand, putting them into galleries, putting those galleries onto the website and building the page out.
I don't, I, that's not my world. But I will saw you on Saturday. Chair Lohbold and I were at a training and I was on the website, or for lots of different things throughout that training and just appreciate all the work that you have done to update it more, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, too. This was, I can't, I don't even begin probably to understand how much work that you put into this. But it just looks very beautiful, very professional, easy to use and I know you've, there's always kinks whenever you roll something like this. So just thank you for just being really responsive. I got that email about the form and I just thought that was a really great way to go about doing that, so, thank you.
And is that something that, you know, you'd want most of us or our staff and our community to kind of wait about a week before we start filling that form out saying, hey, I went to this link and it came to nothing? Because it happened a little bit with me and I'm thinking, I'm not gonna fill this out yet because I'm sure you already know about it.
Yeah, so any bookmarks that you may have will most likely not work. I have set up redirects because our former school sites were ISD709.org slash the school name and now the school name is in front of that, ISD709.org. So the school links will continue to work, but any other links you may need to reuse your, reset your bookmark. And the search function does work on this website, so feel free to use it. And it will, if you were on the Denfeld page, like normally, it would take you back to the district and search the entire.
Yes.
You have it, it will only search the Denfeld website if you are on the Denfeld website using that search function. So I definitely suggest using the search function for now and then being able to reset your bookmarks. But the only redirects I set up were important ones that were on ads, such as Duluth Adult Education, as well as our jobs ads that we have out there for HR and then redirects for all the schools and the programs that have individual sites.
So again, Communications Officer Wellins, we so much appreciate everything that you've done with this huge project. Thank you. Next, just a really, a couple of quick updates on the District Services Center. I know the District Services Center and the facilities remodel as well as the bus garage have been something that we've all been watching come to fruition. We've seen different updates in our HR finance meetings and such. Things are really coming along. They're doing drywall, they're putting lights up, they're putting electrical fixtures in. And I really would like to find an opportunity to have a tour for board members. I know we were waiting through the board until they got some of that stuff done, so it was a little safer. But we would love to set something up. We also, I know you might have heard that there were some questions related to some of our contracts that came up this week. And we go through a bidding process and we're always trying to find as much local labor as possible as well as as much union labor as possible. And right now, I had to talk to Dave Spooner about the number of contracts we have. We have ninety-nine point seven percent of our contracts, ninety-nine point six-nine percent of our contracts are union labor. On rare occasion, there are occurrences in which there are no bids by a union contractor to do the work and that was the case with some refrigeration. So there was some protesting, but there were no union contracts, the contractors that bid for it. So there was a non-union contractor that bid for it. And again, we are always trying to seek union labor. We can't stop the entire project if there is no union labor that is willing to do the work. So on very rare occasion, you know, point-three percent of the time, we might run into a situation like in this case, where we, that occurs. I did reach out to Andy Tampeau from the Trades and had a conversation with him, as well as the mayor and others, just kind of relaying what we're doing and why. And I think that there was a very much shared understanding that we are trying to do what's best from a labor perspective. And so I think that, you know, in the future, we may try to reach out a little bit more to union contractors, but if they don't go for the bids, it's hard to sign them up for the work. But we are doing our best there. But again, that services center is really coming along nicely and I think it will be much more efficient to run for the district. It will save the district a lot of money. And I, I look forward to announcing some things in the very near future related to the property sale. Can't really officially say anything here, but I think things are progressing really favorably and we hope to have some very positive news in the coming weeks.
Are we still shooting for a late May, early June District Services?
Probably even some early May move in. And we talked about that. IT would probably move first because that is most important. We're also trying to stagger things with finance and human resources and other departments so that there is no interruption of service. And so that human resources, for instance, is looking and doing, you know, potentially some move at the end of June so that it doesn't impact hiring and some of the HR work that's done at the end of the, end of the school year. So we are gonna make sure that move is structured to have the least impact on students, staff, and families possible. But we look forward to welcoming you to our new service center. As far as the evaluation, my mid-year evaluation, that's something that we've been As far as the evaluation, my mid-year evaluation, that's something that we've been discussing as well. As part of our three-year governance plan, we are implementing a MSBA-based superintendent evaluation program. And there's a link there to it. That was the document that I shared during my, our conversation in the fall. My goals for two thousand twenty-two and three are, twenty-two, twenty-three are as follows based on the conversation we had. One was basically getting a strategic plan in place, and we're nearly there. Number two was district finances, finances, really thinking about our budget development and maintenance, thinking about financial transparency. And Executive Director Zunich has done a lot of work in that area. I think it would be important for us to share some of our finance, financial modeling and forecasting software that, that we've been, been working on. That's, that's a new project that'll give us a much better forecast into the future, as well as doing a lot of work related to community, community and relationship building. Both with the education after hours, a lot of work with various state entities and state government, as well as working with, with many people locally as well. We are looking for having a mid-year check-in. That's part of the process for evaluation. And so we'd look to have a closed session sometime perhaps this, I'll say next month, which is three and a half hours away, but sometime in March.
I think we were, you know, looking at potentially school board members, you know, doing a, a, a half hour closed session before the March school board meeting was one thought we had where, then we're not, but right now, we haven't really set up an official, but I think our March date is what, like March twenty?
Coming twenties something.
Twenty-first is the regular school.
Twenty-first, but it's also, I, in previous years, that's also been music in the schools funded, in which they've had
That's true.
The band and orchestra have come and played. So we have to see, we're, we're checking on that too to see what, what plans are there. But I'd be available at air convenience. Then finally, oh, that's going backwards. Finally, the school and community outreach on continuing our education after hours series. Our, one of our last ones was scheduled for Lakewood Town Hall. That was scheduled for last night, but the roads out in Lakewood were pretty nasty. We closed a lot of the after-school activities for the district for middle school and elementary. And Principal Sheldon felt like the, we would get much better turnout if we changed the date. So we're looking at March fifteenth as the new date for the Lakewood Elementary Unity Meeting. It's my superintendent report. I know it was a little long. We had a lot of, a lot of topics that, that we talked about, but I appreciate your time. A lot of questions.
No questions.
Anything else?
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. That brings us then to just the schedule of meetings and events that's on your board book. We have next, March seventh is our Committee of the Whole meeting. And we have a policy committee meeting, I'm thinking, at three thirty, and then a Committee of the Whole meeting on March seventh. And we looked at that agenda earlier tonight, and, and it will be a really good, good presentations and good topics. And it, it won't be, you know, terribly long, but it, it's, it has some meeting topics on our Committee of the, Committee of the Whole meeting next Tuesday, March seventh.
I'm hopeful that if we could, for the board, just as a reminder, that meeting will be held here. Normally, the Committee of the Whole meetings are held at UHG, but that meeting because of a number of principals principals that will be joining us and participants, that meeting, both meetings will be held here. So I want to make sure.
Policy meeting will be held here prior to.
Policy.
Because on the calendar, they do say United Healthcare. So.
Let's, let's change that.
We'll make sure we update that.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you for that reminder.
No problem.
Yeah, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to hold each other, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to a reminder during the day that we're on East. And Tuesday morning, just remember. Even tonight, I was like, I don't know why, because I don't, I'm, I'm getting in the car and I'm saying, okay, you know, you're not going to United Healthcare. So don't get in that lane. You're, you're going to East. Talking to myself going down the freeway, you're going to East. Because I think your, your mind just kind of starts thinking about other things and then pretty soon you just go that, that route that you think you're supposed to go, which, you know, UHG has been where I've been going for a while, just for other things to drop off or signing papers and, yeah. So we'll, we'll keep each other in the loop for where we're going. That brings us to number nine on our agenda report of standing committees, and I'll just turn it over for our Committee of the Whole to Assistant Superintendent Bonds. And then it's Human Resource, and Member Kirby will be leading that. And then our Policy Committee with Member Lafferty and Kim.
Thank you. And as a reminder, you can all, the community as well as others can always view the Committee of the Whole meetings. They are also posted on YouTube. And they are pretty, most often robust. Lots of information is shared. So I really encourage the community to really take advantage of watching those videos and, and hearing updates regarding a lot of programs and opportunities that we are providing our students and staff. So during this meeting, which occurred again on February seventh, we had a presentation, a presentation was given by our, excuse me, our school counselors, provided an update regarding the opportunities they provide students and the supports they provide students. And also provide some information related to the need for additional counselors or to maintain the high level of support that is being provided this year, but also make sure that we consider, as you even heard tonight, additional supports for counseling services for our sites, given the, the needs that exist out there. So we want to thank them for their presentation that they provided us. There was also a presentation given or a discussion held regarding solar panels and the opportunities that exist with regards to pursuing that opportunity for the district. That conversation was led by Executive Director Zunich and obviously conversation with the board. And the last topic of, was actually just a full discussion or a, a re-discussion regarding the Cow meeting itself. Just again, trying to affirm what things should come to the Cow meetings, the things that we ought to be considering or other opportunities if we wanted to present other items that might be of interest to the board, of interest to the community. And just affirming that the Cow meeting is meant to just provide opportunities for really in-depth conversations and discussions that the normal school board meeting might not be able to provide. So we affirm that not only will it be topics related to teaching, learning, and equity, but also topics that could come out of finance or HR or other departments as well. And that concluded our Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? I don't, I don't think there's anything necessarily, except for accepting our, on the consent agenda concerning our Committee of the Whole meeting. So I'll go to Member Kirby with our HR and Finance.
Okay, the business committee met on Valentine's Day. It was very efficient and comprehensive, led by Member Eater. And the goal is always to make the report shorter than the meeting itself. So I will go over the highlights, at least what I thought. Twenty-four teachers have indicated retirement plans at this point in time. We have a new assistant to serve at the front desk, Rebecca Lester, and I'm not sure she's been officially welcomed by the board, so this is it.
I, I welcomed her. I've, I've seen her a few different times, so I'll, I'll do that for the board.
We continue to search for a new HR manager position and are still working to increase recruitment for custodial and bus drivers. As we mentioned before, I think HR is attending some job pairs, including a family resource line for a man. Enrollment remains up by the core over projected, which is good. The nutrition report showed that the child nutrition was awarded a ten thousand dollar grant for farm-to-school. And interesting, our, our current lunch balance is seventy-six thousand dollars, which is the highest it's been in some time. And it's projected to be a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars by the end of the year. And so we will have to make some
These are overdue.
Overdue lunch bills, if you speak. The facilities report was sent away with Dave Spooner's last meeting. And once again, I will say personally, and I think the board, we are really going to miss Dave. An assistant director has been fired, Jeremy Casapides. Casapides. Really, so awful, right, so awful. So I said, Casapides. We still have twenty-three vacancies in the facilities operation. And I know Dave's been working on that, and that is a thing. The Denfeld Cock Tower project has been mentioned several times, and that was also discussed, and the new facilities building also being completed. The technology report was revolved around some cybersecurity and the need for a strategic plan for IT. Our Chromebooks are now, they last three to four years, and ours are now two years old. And so that's going to have to be an issue that we deal with. Transportation, we're transitioning to a new routing system. And there are four hundred and thirty-four daily routes that he changes at times, so that is a huge issue. There's still looking for an assistant transportation supervisor, always looking for drivers. And we have new buses that are supposed to arrive
Yes.
March fourteenth. I'll believe it when I see it, but yes.
I'd also like to add, we actually found the assistant transportation supervisor who starts next week. Since this report, so we're very excited. We're rebuilding transportation, so. And I'd also like to add that we did a route audit, and we were able to condense two routes, and we're hoping to make them more efficient. So we're still working that out, the start of this week.
And I would add that we're going to be putting in place recruiting bonuses for staff who are able to recruit additional bus drivers or additional custodians. That was something that we, we had seen in some other districts. So we're hoping that's going to help some of the lack of drivers and the lack of custodians.
Okay, we have a resolution on the consent agenda to accept donations, and those are listed in the board book. And as always, we thank everybody who donates anything. And there are a lot of people who donate a lot. We have a resolution to accept a grant of sixty-nine thousand plus from Zunich and Jeremy Casapides.
Yes, very good.
Placing cameras on buses. This is a three-year grant, I believe.
Yeah, so we worked. Our district was allotted up to two hundred and fifty thousand. However, because of what our needs were, we were able to secure seventy thousand. We were really excited about that. And we also went ahead and purchased some interior cameras. The ones we had were not, they were outdated. So we're really, we've been putting some money into transportation, just making it better for our students, for our drivers, for our dri- you know, your video, if we need to see videos of behaviors and whatnot, we will have better videos now of everything. So we're pretty excited about that, the grant. We should be getting official documentation next month about the grant. And we'll bring it to your attention when it comes.
We reviewed a job classification for a third-party billing specialist, who is a person who will handle third-party billing for special education regarding billing forms, information, et cetera. Also, the consent agenda is the least preparation will continue and fundraisers for less than. And I think that is the essence of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one, thank you.
Yep.
In your packet, I did include the proposal from Whitley.
That's right, that's right.
They've done an amazing job. We've really come to a great agreement with them. And it is less than the hundred thousand. I'd like to go ahead and sign that engagement letter. But I wanted with superintendent's recommendation, wanted to be transparent about that. It's a three-year proposal, and it is fair for the size of our district and the legalities of them. The accounting standards have become so intense and requires a lot of time on their part. And I can literally email them or call them for assistance or questions, and they just give us help. So it's, it's more than just coming in to do audit. I feel like we do get support around it. So I did, I just wanted to include that and make sure you saw that.
Thank you. And we did, we did see that, and then I would think that that's on our consent agenda?
I think it was more of an informational, I don't know.
Oh, that's right, because the, it's under a hundred thousand, so you could go ahead, but yeah. And we appreciate that and, and, and really respect that, you know, you wanted to allow us to, to know that. We've had Whitley now for a while, and they know us and, and they see the depth and, and everything that we need and
They do. I'm very keen to the district, so.
And they've watched us through our transition into a new accounting program and
Yes.
kind of helped us through the hiccup last, last audit for that.
Yes.
So we're smoothing things out and
Getting smoother.
It would be, it would be great to keep them. And they, they've applied or we? How does that work?
We, there was a five-year contract. Now we, we're going with a three-year proposal. And I mean, they, you know, approached us, of course, because they know it was up.
Okay, okay.
They'll have this time to have that conversation. But there's no, they're, they can accommodate our size. It's just, it's a lot. Anyway, I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
And so we're moving on to our Policy Committee with Chair Lafferty.
Great. We had our policy meeting on February seventh, and we had two items on our policies for first reading. We're focused on the five hundred series. We have a bunch of different series of policies to go through. And this one is a section that's on students. So for our first reading, it was a five-two-one student disability nondiscrimination. And again, the purpose of this policy is to protect students with disabilities from discrimination on the basis of disability and to identify and evaluate learners who, within that intent of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, need services, accommodations, or programs in order that such learners may receive a free, appropriate public education. And of course, there's much more to this. And we, last time reviewed it in October twenty twenty, so reviewing it again. And one of the changes was just to make sure Anthony Bonds as Assistant Superintendent was listed as well as coordinator. So that was our first reading of that policy. And then the second policy that we're bringing forward for the first reading is a gender inclusion policy. And I know I, as well as all of us who have been a part of this discussion, are really proud that we are bringing this policy forward. And we, our goal is to make sure all of our students are treated fairly and are welcome here in the district. And this policy, the statement of support is that students and staff of Duluth Public Schools deserve respectful and inclusive learning environments that value students' gender identity and gender expression. Duluth Public Schools ensures that all students have access to programming and facilities in which they feel comfortable, supported, and safe. This policy addresses that inequities some students, including intersex, transgender, two-spirit, gender non-conforming students, and gender questioning students confront as they navigate a system designed using a gender binary model. These guidelines do not and cannot anticipate every situation that may occur, as every student is unique. The support for each student must be assessed and addressed individually based upon the student's specific requests and needs. And these guidelines are supported by District Policy One and Two, Equal Education Opportunity, Four-One-Three, Prohibiting Harassment and Violence, Five-Fourteen, Bullying Prohibition, Five-Twenty-Two, Title Ten, Student Sex Nondiscrimination, and Five-Twenty-Six, Hazing. So this is the first reading. Some of the changes So this uh is the first reading, uh some of the changes that were made after our discussion were uh in section um three and four, where we uh add a more inclusive language uh for parents and guardians and then a gender non-conforming student, and so you'll see that in section three and four. And uh also a change under the dress codes um a- after our discussion. Uh so with that, uh is uh in its first reading. And then we did not have any other policies for a second reading. Uh member Sandholm, member uh Zadowski, did you have anything to add?
I think you did a really good job summarizing it and it fits, like you said, um they're supported by district policy and it fits right in with our student policies, so, thank you.
Nothing bad, thank you.
And and thanks to both the, you know, our our committees, committee of the whole and the leadership of uh assistant superintendent Bonds, our HR and business with our committee and with um Chair Eater, and then our policy committee too, which has really been um working hard, turning out the really important policies and getting that that work done and um we just appreciate the extra meetings, the extra detail, especially policy right now, these were really important and I know you had great leadership from our team and our our district superintendent, assistant superintendent as well and and um that that's the uh number nine on our agenda. Any other comments? But thank you, so that brings us to number ten, just our general board committee updates, if there is anyone, um again, our committee assignments, just to review for our community too, is on parks and rec. Member Eater is our community rep there, our committee rep. Our district wellness is um member Kirby. Our Duluth Public School Foundation is member Laffler Kemp. Our education EAC um committee is um members Zadowski and member Oswald. Our federal programs advisory committee is member Oswald and I think there's a meeting tomorrow morning.
This Friday morning?
Right.
Friday, okay. Um our head start policy council committee member is member Laffler Kemp. We have our intergovernmental um committee, that is member Eater, member Kirby and member Zadowski. And I think that that um invite just went out earlier this week too from um Commissioner Grimm. We have our quality steering committee, which is member Kemp and member Oswald. We have our Minnesota State High School lead committee and our member um member Sandholm represents us on that committee. Our special services advisory committee is member Eater, our staff development advisory committee is member Oswald. Our transfer appeal is member Sandholm and our transportation hazard safety committee is also member Sandholm. Those are the committees that we are appointed to throughout the 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 time, is there anybody that has a specific report or comment or a need from the other board members that you'd like to share? Remind, encourage, clarify? Okay? We have a lot of committees, we do a lot of work in our committee, in our community. Number eleven is our con- consent agenda and that has been in your packet. Um and you're able to look at it, so I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move.
So member Laffler Kemp moves and member Oswald is our second.
Second.
So all those in favor of approving our consent agenda, which can, which can, which is all of minutes and our human resource uh and business uh information approval of, there was no real final approval of policy, so there's not a a final reading on any policy. Um we are accepting though all of our committee reports tonight, so all those in favor of of accepting our consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving along on our regular school board agenda brings us to our resolutions for committee reports. So I am asking um member, I believe, Sandholm to do our our first one, under twelve A.
Uh twelve, uh resolution two dash two-three-three-nine-four-eight. Uh resolution acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota statute four-six-five twenty-three oh three requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, we have resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. We have further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. Um I move resolution two dash two-three-three-nine-four-eight.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Member Kirby is a second, all those in favor of accepting our donations, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, we accept our donations, six zero.
And we thank those, all of those people that
We thank those, and they're listed in board book and our community can see it online as well. Our next resolution, uh will member Laffler Kemp um read, it would be the twelve B, acceptance of grants.
Uh I move resolution B two twenty-three thirty-nine forty-nine, resolution acceptance of grants to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota statute four-six-five four-three requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, therefore, we have resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. We have further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And the organization is the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, uh on the school bus stock arm camera grant, which we spoke briefly about. Uh and it's uh for sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And the terms are for cameras are in use on qualified buses for a minimum of three years, quarterly progress reporting and a final report is required in due thirty days following the end of the project. And thank you Simone and and Jeremy for your work on that, uh and uh coming up work as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six zero. Do we want to go back to our donations and do a roll call?
Sure, we'll do that really quick.
So um in our donations, resolution two dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine forty-eight, of which member Sandholm motioned and who did the second on it?
Kirby.
Uh member Kirby, it's a roll call vote, so we're going to uh accept that by roll call.
Member Kirby. Alright, member Laffler Kemp?
Yes.
Member Low Hall?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
I vote yes, um and member Sandholm?
Yes.
And member Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Moving on to resolution that is under, it's a special resolution, it's under action items, it is number eight, under fifteen A, and I'm asking member Kirby.
This is special resolution S P two dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine forty-seven. School board member attendance at MSBA negotiation seminars resolved that independent school district number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the MSBA negotiation seminars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member, member Sandholm makes the second, so all those in favor of resolution S P dash two dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine, thirty-nine forty-seven, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six zero. Just for updates on that, um the uh one for February twenty-fourth was canceled due to weather and they rescheduled it for March twenty-fourth, so if there's anyone interested in the in-person, I know some of us have done the online version, but it's in-person March twenty-fourth. And we have one more resolution, it is resolution, um I I move resolution S P dash one dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine forty-three. School board members attendance at MASA and AMSD days at the Capitol. And I'm gonna say that that should read MSBA um board days at the Capitol. Or it could be all three.
I can, I can add MSBA, if MASA and MSBA are combined on the same day.
M A S A and MSBA are on the same day.
Yeah, so I can add MSBA to it.
Yes, I think that's important.
So right now we have MASA, which is the Minnesota Association of School Superintendent's Association, and we have AMSD, which is so we don't have MSBA out here right now.
It's a separate day.
I thought they were the same.
MASA and MSBA are on the same day, so
Yeah.
Right.
Do you think M A S A, M A S A is is gonna cover MSBA, does it, is it the same?
It would from a legality perspective, but if you wanted to, if you wanted to note that you're you're attending M N S B A
Yeah, it it would.
Does it?
day as well, that could be
Yeah, I can just update.
From a public perception pers- influence or whatnot, we could just add MSBA.
I can just update the resolution.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can just update it and then put the corrected one on roll call.
Thank you. Okay, so M A S A is also MSBA's same day, they're doing it together jointly.
For S A.
Um and AMSD, which is a the, a different day, so, okay. So I move resolution S P dash one dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine forty-three, resolve that independent school district seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend MASA, MSBA and AMSD days at the Capitol. Is there a second? Members Zadowski, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six zero. So that brings us to the special resolution, the approval of the twenty-three twenty-four school year calendar. Is anybody gonna speak to it or we just move it, okay, so.
There there's very little change from this year's calendar, it's pretty much a mirror copy with the the dates changed. We would like, we did, uh Mr. Bonds did try to look at having some additional professional development time or something built in, but there was not much interest in in that side of the party.
So this um calendar has gone through your steering committees and teacher and all of that stuff already?
Yes.
Yep, yep, and didn't we look at this once before?
We we did.
Yeah, okay, so all those in favor of adopting uh the approval of the twenty-three twenty-four school year calendar? We, well, I'll make a motion, yeah, we need a motion.
I'll move that.
Member Zadowski makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Member Laffler Kemp, all those in favor of approval of the twenty-three twenty-four school year calendar, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to number fourteen, are there any questions? Other?
I have another.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry, um at the last uh January board meeting, uh Jody Pappatisha from Lakewood had presented me with an envelope with some thank you notes for school board members from students and teachers out at Lakewood and I uh it was at at the end of the meeting, so
Yep, I remember seeing, yeah.
I wanna pass, no, you weren't here, but
I know, I saw it on the video, yeah.
Oh, okay, so these are available for each of you to take one. Uh and um they're very cute and they're handmade and there's wonderful notes of appreciation.
So we just take one?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Refer anytime. And so that brings us to number fifteen, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Some.
Member Oswald makes the motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm seconds our motion to adjourn, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Um we are adjourned, six zero.